Whereas the information from this meeting concerns the residents of LaSalle. And whereas we have a community center, we should be having all meetings there. And that whereas all residents could attend without having to travel to and from our community approximately 70 miles. Whereas a 6:00 PM meeting does not give those that work time to get to these meetings. Therefore, it is only right to include all of our residents and give them a right to vote their opinions by having these meetings in LaSalle. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir in the back. Didn't you have your hand up?
Yeah. Sure.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Stephen Schultz from LaSalle. First thing I'd like to say is thank you to the council for giving us a workshop in LaSalle. It was well attended and it gave people a voice. As always, some people were thrilled, some people were unhappy, but we felt like we got represented, so thank you for that. I'd like to thank Kristin for coming out there and putting up with that ruckus crowd. I'd like to say that, first of all, the map as is stated right now, I'm happy with. We were listened to and most of these changes that we asked for were in effect. I'd also like to say that the usage code, for the most part, is in line with what we asked for. My only point to bring up today is, at the meeting, we were given a supplemental piece of paper that stated about animal rights on residential lots, okay? When we read through the 182-page proposal, we did not see that language in that proposal. So we would like to see that added. Furthermore, we did not see those changes put to community commercial, which is my biggest concern, that we had animal rights also added from residential and community commercial. As you know, that's one of our biggest points. And I'd like to present this as my approach. What this is, is something that we favor. This is a zoning ordinance from the county of Toowila. And it just shows by lot, acre size, what they thought was a proper number of animals. This is just a guideline. We see this as very favorable for language that will actually go into it. It's just a recommendation, if you'd at least look it over. Thank you, that's all I had.
Is it okay to present this? Please. Thank you. Anyone? Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm George Schultz from LaSalle. Thank you for the opportunity to make these public comments and inquire about clarity in regards to proposed rezoning of LaSalle and its implications on future generations as it pertains to generational agriculture within our family, but within the community as well. Firstly, we would like to advocate for the inclusion of agriculture type 1 and 2 animal density in community commercial, as well as limited animal density in the residential zoning, to address current residents and their raisings of chickens or other small livestock that may pertain to the personal use or 4-H projects, thus promoting the furtherance of future agriculture development and education for our community youth. Additionally, we are concerned with the multi-use table as it pertains to current agricultural hay, grain, and growing in regards with livestock operations in LaSalle. In its current use table, it's not permitted even conditionally. This would have a dramatic negative impact on operations like Charles Redd's, who then put those lands into some non-compliance issues in the future. I'm not sure that he had the full use table when he made that decision. I've talked to him as well. We have encouraged the inclusion of private corrals in the multi-use zoning, as commercial stables are already allowed. So permitting those in the multi-use would allow current residents to continue with their current endeavors and not be burdened by future non-compliance as well. With regard to our family's parcels, roll of a ranch ending in 5408-4800-5406, we, of course, request agriculture as we did last time. With the mailing of the new map, we did notice some discrepancies and some inaccuracies. Basically, parcel 5406 and 5408 don't include all the agriculture. It has a bunch of residential still attached in there. So that for all three parcels, all of the acreage should be agricultural.
George, we can look at, sorry, we'll look at that.
Okay.
I'll call on you.
Okay. In closing, really, the only concern we can find with the agriculture table is in regards to current or future home-based businesses that may be already operating, let's say, just in example, like in, you know, the cottage food industry. You know, cooking, I kind of, I think I know what the use table means, but we just wanted to clarify whether that is included in the current home business structure, or if that is going to limit that with the future zoning. Because if you just simply read the bullet points, it looks like it would exclude that. And that was just the only concern there, so.
What was that business you were talking about?
So right now, yeah, and well, a couple, a couple of businesses, like in our case, home-based business, but I'm talking about like, I'm not talking about just us, right?
Right.
So like, let's say, somebody has a cottage food where they, I don't know, make cinnamon rolls and sell them, right?
Yeah.
It sounds on the surface like that may be limited. I don't think it would be.
Yeah.
Okay. That's the only clarification we wanted on that.
All right.
Cool. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Naomi Wilson from LaSalle. In the meeting, we talked about animal density for a community commercial, and we discussed that 3 and 4 wasn't going to work. And then we kind of discussed that 1 and 2 were what we were looking at, and that is like less than 3 and 4. So we just won, and I saw in the notes, it still talked about 1 and 2, so 1 and 2 is not going to work. The paper that Steve Schultz submitted, that's more like, because we're less than 10 acres too, so that's, I mean, it says less than 10 acres would have that, wouldn't have the animal rights. So it doesn't really pertain to the community commercial. So that needs to be, the wording needs to be changed. And that's it. Thanks.
Thanks, Naomi.
Naomi, real quick, so are you advocating for higher animal densities on less land?
Yes, for community commercial.
Yeah.
We want higher animal density than 3 and 4, because 3 and 4 specifies only like, you can only have like five horses if you have less than five acres.
Five acres.
It's kind of crazy. That's a lot of land to only have like five animals or five animal units. So we're looking for some, for community commercial, we're looking for something bigger than that. That's what the one that was submitted with Toowila County, it's more like 10 horses, or it was something per acreage, you could have so many animal units. And that makes more sense in community commercial, because they let you have barns and stables and all that kind of stuff. So restricting you to having like four horses if you have less than five acres, that's not going to work for a lot of people who live on LaSalle.
We'll see, we can do, a lot of that's dictated by other Utah State code divisions. So we'll see how far we can push it.
Dean Hawley, I'm out of LaSalle as well. And, you know, the whole reason I moved out to LaSalle was to get away from people, you know, and to have my animals and have my livestock. And so I'm off of Fox Lane and I'm on the north side, so I'm zoned in that community commercial, which I'm okay with, as long as we have the animal rights. Because that was the confusing part, was, oh, you can have your stables, you can have your arena and all this, I'll be, can't have any animals. Whoa, how's that work? So I looked over a proposal that Steve Schultz had brought up from Toowila, their recommendations. And I liked that. I mean, that's, gives us an idea of what would give us, how many animals we can have. Because I want to be able to have cows and have my goats and stuff like that, to have a small farm out there. So that's why I wanted to, I like his, what he brought up from Toowila County as well, because the density 1 and 2 was really pretty tight. So that means I can only have two cows, and I want to have more than that. That's the whole reason I moved to the middle of nowhere. So that's really, I said, I like the idea that Steve Schultz got. Oh, thank you.
I am Danny McGee, I'm also in LaSalle. And I really am just going to repeat what has been said by the last two people up here, animals. And I'm in compliance right now, I have two acres on commercial, or is it CC? And so I have four animals, and I believe that puts me in compliance. But that doesn't mean that, that I might want to get a future, other future animals. And I think that that's the primary concern, is that we're not held limited. Or if we are, we need to know what we need to do to amend those laws. And if it means going to the state level, I think most people here would be willing to do that. So, anyway, just one more voice on this thing.
Thank you, thank you, Kenny.
Lawrence Burkhardt, live in LaSalle. My concern is, where my property is at, it went to, it's going to go to community commercial. My insurance company told me they're going to raise my rates. My loan company told me I had to negotiate a new loan for a commercial loan. When I talked to them about refinancing, I said it was going to community commercial. I said, you've got to get a commercial loan if it's in a commercial zone. But I don't know why they went from Markle, the county barn is right across the street from me, on Mustang. They took in my property and all the way down Mustang, and they took in half of the Williams subdivision, but not all of it, just half of it. But there's only three houses on that road. And they're all going to be community commercial. But like I say, my rates, they're going to raise my insurance rates, they're going to make me negotiate my loan to get a commercial loan, which is going to be higher. The taxes are going to go up, because the tax rate for commercial property is higher than a tax rate for residential. So when they get this all done, and it stays community commercial, I'm not going to be able to afford my mortgage anymore. I'm going to have to, you know, sell out or something, but the person that buys it, I'm not going to be able to afford the mortgage either. So that's all I have to say.
So just real quick before you leave, are you advocating for you to be in residential?
Residential, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can you please talk to me after too? Let me check.
Bill Wharton from LaSalle. So in the original meeting the other day, was under the, I was under the impression that that was to set the zoning, as to changes, new zoning stuff that I wouldn't where we even had really before. I've been in the same spot, more or less, over 50 years. What I have used, I've used the land to my benefit. I have pasture, barns, pig pens, chicken pens, that's always been there. I'm now listed under residential. When the vote was taken, do you want to change? Are you happy with what you got? There's a strip of me, two neighbors, and Lane Fuller, who is set up with hayfields and ag. We voted to change ours, we were going to there, and it hasn't been changed, nothing was said. They said, oh, not enough of you, and passed us by, for which would put all of us out of compliance. One of the neighbors in between us just moved out there. He probably spent a half million dollars on his open arena and his animals, that he is now in residential, that he is out of compliance. I'm sure, I can't speak for them, they're not here, but I'm sure all four of us that are on that strip would like to be changed either to ag or multi-use. We both voted multi-use, me and Lane, the other day, that got dismissed, I guess. But ag would be fine for either of us also. Thank you.
You got that.
You come up here and show me which parcels you're talking about.
Hey, I'm working out on the other map. On the one from the other day.
One other thing on my parcels, originally I bought the place, we bought it in three sections, and now.
I got you.
Somewhere it has changed. I've been over and talked to the clerks, they have no idea where my three parcels turned into two, but I've only got two.
Any other public comment?
Eric Swafford, LaSalle. In this workshop, I came in a little late. I started listening to what was going on. I made some comments about the water. We do not have the water in our valley to support residential, lower income residential housing, as Kristin told us. Another thing was, Kristin was fast-talking all the elders, wasn't listening, was trying to buffalo some of them. That really upset me. Another thing, she looked right at me, told me she was a schoolteacher, and she can get my attention if she wanted. There is no reason to be talking to the public that way. She holds a county position. It's not right.
And another thing, our house was supposed to be in the green, we're in the yellow.
Just to clarify, said I was a schoolteacher, and he said he was that student.
Yeah, I was the, I was the teacher's worst night there, I told you that.
Yeah.
Yes, I did.
Okay.
A little nervous. Teresa Rutter from LaSalle, and I'm actually speaking for Pat Garcia. He is also on that.
He's one of the neighbors I was talking about.
Yeah, he's between Wharton and Johnson's, or whatever, and he is also, he's requesting to stay residential. That's it.
Okay.
Mandy Schultz of LaSalle. I just wanted to also talk on Lane Fuller's parcel, because he went up with us afterwards to discuss that, and he did not want his residential. And it was in there, so, like I say that. And then also just, I know my husband asked about clarity on the cottage food, but I didn't totally get whether or not that was going to be affected or not, cottage food industry with, with that.
Home businesses won't be affected, as long as everything's within the home. So where it goes into commercial is if you have public parking, a sign out front, as soon as you make it, like if you're selling from your house, as soon as it becomes a public space, you're considered commercial as per the business licenses. As long as it's all in your home and you're selling off-site, it's not, it's not.
Okay, so those things that say food preparation or baking or any of that, okay, thank you.
And I think you're protected as far as the food, like, commercial kitchen, I think you're protected under the farm stand, farmer's market rules.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? It doesn't have to be about LaSalle.
We haven't noticed, we all live there.
I have a comment online. Could we, this is Kelsey Wilson, and I work with the Red family, and they have several individuals around LaSalle. Could we get some clarification on a non-compliance versus a grandfathered use? I don't know if maybe that was going to be talked about later on, but just some clarification there of like, a property is currently being used this way, but this many animals on it, and then the zoning's going to change. Is it grandfathered in to its current zoning, or is it going to be considered non-compliant now?
So Kelsey, I think the clarification, we don't use grandfather when you use, we use non-compliant. So what you're suggesting is non-compliant versus non-conforming. Non-compliant is what you're doing right now isn't legal, you're not in compliance with anything. Non-conforming is what you would, what I think you're considering grandfathering, where what you're doing now will be brought in as a non-conforming use. And you can keep doing that. The limitations to non-conforming though is that you cannot extend on that. So if you have an Airbnb and you have four cabins, and we're saying, hey, we don't want Airbnbs anymore in residential, you can still do your Airbnb with four cabins. We, as long as you're legal now, you've got a business license, you're good to go. But let's say business grows, you want to do eight cabins now. Well, as a non-conforming, you can't. So those are the limitations to the non-conforming. The reason why we have non-conforming is to not ding the people who are already doing something. We want to let them keep doing what they're doing. But ideally, 20 years down the road, we would like this use to time out and be in line with our ordinance. So for instance, with the animals that you brought up, however many animals you have now-ish, not counting your chickens-ish, is what you're going to be allowed in the future. So let's say you have a lot of extra land, and you want to turn some of it into a feed lot. Well, you can't do it because you're extending the use. So that's the, the pros and cons of the non-conforming is we don't ding you if you're doing it, but down the line, we would like to see the feed lot not being residential.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that clarification.
So just to add on to that clarification, what about the transfer of the property? So if it goes from a person to a trust, or from a trust to a person or a sale, what happens?
So non-conforming transfers. So let's say, you're dinging me on time?
Yeah, your three minutes are up.
Let's say, I, the Airbnb is just easy, because I can, I can give you a small number, right? So let's say I have the four cabins. Well, I'm, I want to retire. I want to sell that Airbnb business to somebody else to run as an Airbnb. That transfers ownership. So a non-conforming can go with it. Now, they cannot put in eight cabins. They're, they're stuck to the same vestiture limit as where I was at. Non-conforming will lapse if you are not doing that use for a year. So if I stop doing Airbnb, let's say all the grandkids move home, they're in the cabin, so I'm not renting them out. If I don't do Airbnb for 12 months, that has lapsed, and now it goes back into residential. So we want to encourage people who have something going, we want to keep it going, but in an ideal situation, we want those to time out over time, over the long haul, to a more ideal zoning situation.
So with the new zoning, and in that situation, does the variance, the future variance, if it needed to happen, would that be affected by the zoning? Does that make sense?
I think you're using variance in a way we don't legally. So if you wanted to expand on the four cabins, I think that's what you're asking, right?
Yeah, after a transfer or a.
So if zoning will permit it as a conditional use, you could reapply, but you're basically starting over as a new vestiture date. Or it might not be permitted, and you just can't do it.
So, I guess, just to clarify for me, you're saying a non-conforming use stays the same moving forward once this is adopted? So just to be, you know, to put it in, instead of Airbnb terms, let's put it in cattle terms, right? You got 10 cows, right now, today, this gets adopted, you're currently non-conforming use, but you'll also still be a non-conforming use after adoption.
Correct?
Mm-hmm.
You just couldn't get 11 cows.
You just can't get 11, right? So you can keep 10 in perpetuity.
Ever.
And I can sell my land and house to whoever, gents, and he can keep his 10 cattle.
Yep.
But he can't have 11.
It follows the property. Right.
And I think it's important that people understand that use table, to know that if it's not permitted, conditional or permitted, if it's not allowed, you may be able to do that for a while, but if something happens, you transfer, you pass that year period, understand that that can never come back.
Correct, and that's, you know, this is a way, the reason why non-conforming exists is it's a way to salvage places that haven't been zoned. And I'll be the first to admit, Spanish Valley, it was a free-for-all for a long time. And now we're trying to come up with a plan after the fact. And so we're, we have an 80% non-conforming in Spanish Valley, right? Because stuff isn't where we would ideally like it to be. And so we're trying to get ahead of it in LaSalle, so it's not just a free-for-all. Where there's some plan. And when I came into this position, the plan was all just rural residential. That's it. Well, that's not really a, that's not really a plan for like, where do we want to see a lot of commercial growth? Where do we want to see a lot of residential growth? Where do we want to hold ag sacred? And so LaSalle was, with just this huge chunk of rural residential, it was still kind of a free-for-all. So we're, we're trying to make a plan moving forward, and this is long haul stuff, 10, 20 years.
So expand that, on that just a little bit, and especially with, if Kathy's listening for reference to Charles, right now, the use table in multi-use prohibits agriculture or industry or business, also hay and grain production, right, or, or growing. And so as a current property owner, you can continue that, but if you wanted to transfer or sell that, that ends, it never comes back.
So it'd probably be covered under agricultural business, instead of.
But it's specifically private.
Okay.
That was in the notes on the back of the paper.
Yeah, so we'll have to, we'll look at that. I think it's.
So now my question, are these use tables open to change?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about tonight when we get into our agenda.
Which raises all these questions, raise more questions, and yet I can see where we're starting to come to for resolution. But what I see here, this is now a late-phase proposal. Is that what we call this? That we are proposing these?
We've been working on it since April.
Right, but I'm saying that things are starting to wind with clothes. At what point do you expect to implement, at what point does the gavel drop and these are now?
We're hoping to close draft additions November 1st.
Okay, which is right around the corner.
And that's when things will be published of, this is no longer a draft, this is what we're looking at.
And then, any, from any day after that, then public records downstairs, if we were to access those records, in other words, that would already be implemented at that point? Or soon after?
So November 1st, just to clarify, and I want to be careful not to get into a public hearing here, so I can clarify, but we don't want back and forth too much, otherwise I get in trouble. So November 1st, I am praying, we are working a lot, to make sure that we can get stuff posted to the public. At which time, we will host a public hearing, both at Planning Commission and at County Commission.
For vote?
So I, if we.
Is that more public vote?
No. So it's just public hearing, I'm hoping to have public hearing in November, and then it would actually go to vote in our December meeting. So there will be plenty of time, once we have the finals done.
And quite honestly, part of the reason for asking is that there may be strategies that people may want to take advantage of between now and then to alter their properties or the uses of their property.
I definitely think that's.
Perhaps that guy might want to get that 11th cow before the 1st of November, in other words. That's kind of where I'm going with it, okay? Just, that's why I wanted to ask the question specifically first.
I'll see all you guys at the cell barn.
Kristin, did you finish the process, though? It would be coming back to the Planning Commission.
So in an ideal situation, and I can't make any promises, I'm now meeting with our lawyers weekly instead of bi-weekly, we might move it up to twice a week. Ideally, this will be done November 1st, ideally. It would go to public hearing for November 14? Let me check.
Is that the end of that?
No, all of our county meetings are in the county.
This, this document is for the entire county, not just LaSalle.
So November 14th is our next Planning Commission. So in an ideal situation, and the printer has already been notified, if we can get things posted the 1st and mailed out the 1st, we can have public hearing on the 14th. And I, instead of doing both public hearing and voting in one meeting, I think it would be wise to split them up. So we'll have public hearing on the 14th, and it'll go to vote on the December 12th. Oh, I'm so good. And it'll go to vote on the December twelfth. Oh, I'm so good.
And then.
And at which point, i- if we approve to recommend, it will go onward to the next County Commission.
Meeting, which they still have to vote.
They, we will have a public hearing prior to that.
Okay, so there'll be yet another.
So I'm also gonna split it for their meeting as well.
So they ultimately have the vote on whether or not to pass.
So that gives people six weeks, seven weeks. By the time it gets to County Commission for final approval to look at things.
So County Commission will have two hearings?
No.
They'll have one hearing.
We have one hearing and they have.
We have, and then we vote whether to recommend, and then they vote whether to adopt.
Right, so that's just, that's the process. We are working very hard to try to get through it.
Kristin, um, just a quick question. You referenced your legal representation a couple of times. Is that through governmental attorneys, so county attorneys, or is that an outside?
It's a combination, so we have two of our attorneys. Gents is is one of them. Not to call you out, Gents. He, I'm surprised you look so fresh after our three-hour session. Um, so we have our two attorneys. We also have a a state consulting attorney.
Okay, and now.
So. So he's kinda like a third party.
Are those records uh be available for public access?
Yes, so that's what we're.
Even with your private attorney?
Yeah, so those meetings are not.
Uh, meeting or negotiations between the commission?
No, that's, that's not a, we don't have a quorum or anything. Those meetings and.
So it's it's different, maybe it was the county attorney representing the commission?
Yeah, so those meetings are more like a work session, and quite honestly, I don't know that there'd be. Anything of value for you. Um, because a lot of it is just nitty-gritty like. Do you wanna be called the planning administrator or the planning and zoning administrat-? I mean, it's that kinda stuff. So it's very tedious. Um, but that document that we've been working on is what we're working to publish November first. So you will see the. Trophy of all of our meetings.
And then everybody's comments will also be publicly available? Those are not publicly.
Now, we have taken, that is all the comments that we have made over all of our work sessions. That's what we're writing up and making sure we have in a legal context.
So so can I ask if there was, what was the overriding drive to retain private counsel versus?
It's just a work session to get done. I mean, it's a staff-only deal. It's not a public deal. Once we have the document done, we will publish it to the public. And at that point in time is when you can have public comment and public hearing on it.
What what I heard you say wasn't outside counsel per se. You said some sort of state attorney, right? How would you?
Yeah.
Yeah, please.
State, state your name.
Public comment.
And where are you living from?
Hi, my name's Jets Nielsen. I live in Spanish Fork. But I grew up in Blanding, and I'm here working with the County Attorney's Office.
And he drives down every.
Yeah, every morning. I don't, I don't ever sleep. No, I come down about once a month and what, twice a month. So I, maybe ju- just give an overview here. The, the Planning Commission, their goal is to implement the. I don't know how you wanna say it, the. What's best for the county, and and it covers the whole county. And so. This group helps decide what areas in the county are residential, commercial, agricultural, combinations, you know, what? And what's, what's best and where. And to make that decision, they get input from the public. They also get input from professionals that know about, you know, what what would be appropriate. Close to a highway might be one zone, farther off the highway might be a different zone. Um, and you have zones that come together, and certain zones you might not want to be. Uh, neighbors, you might wanna have a buffer between them, you know, so. They get all this input, and they create a product called, whatever you wanna call it, the. The proposed zoning map, the proposed, what's that?
Screw the neighbors?
No, it's never that. It's never that. I can tell you that all these people up here work, they do their work for free. And none of them has any desire to stick it to anybody. Um, once, a- and they they get input all along the way. And at a certain point, the law requires that the public be able to come in and give input also. That's a, that's a, that's the, um. Um, now the word escapes me.
Workshops?
Well, no, the, the public hearing. The public hearing is where this group hears what the public has to say. And they consider it, and they can say, based on what we've heard, we need to make changes. Even though we've received all this input all the way until now, we thought we had a finished product, but this public input is causing us to change our mind. Then the timeframe would be changed, and they push it back, come back with a new version. Have another public hearing and maybe keep it, or maybe make more changes. But the point is, they go through a long process so that they think they have a good finished product, then they hear your input in a public hearing. And then they decide whether to make changes or not. And if they decide to approve what they have, then that approval goes to County Commission. And then the county commissioners make the final vote, and that's when it becomes approved, is once they approve it. So you can also come to the County Commission meeting, you can express your concerns there. Staff, which is Kristin, will probably tell the county commissioners, look, we went through a long process, we received a lot of input. And we're recommending this product as it is. And the county commissioners can say, okay, we're gonna go with the product as it is, or they can say we need. More input, we need some changes. That's kind of the process. I don't know if that helps clarify anything, and maybe I'll just touch on the whole grandfathered and nonconforming and all that kinda stuff. The use you have today that's legal remains legal after all these changes are made. In the United States of America, we don't do the after the fact gotcha. You're supposed to know what the law is, and then you comply going forward. So if you're already doing something that's legal. It's, it still remains legal. It's just that you can't, as Kristin said, add to it, make a change to it. Um, abandon it, and then use it after you've abandoned it. So I don't know that county, anyone's gonna count how many cattle you have or how many sheep, but. You know, if you had ten cattle and then you had a hundred, that might be something that would come to someone's attention. But I don't know if that hel- does that help?
What about if you're doing something illegal or non?
So if you, if your property, if your property right now is not in compliance. Then it, it doesn't qualify for what they call the grandfathered or the legal but nonconforming status. So in order to have that non, that legal nonconforming status or grandfather status, you have to be legal now. You have to be conforming now.
And I think, Jents, will you talk a little bit about, um, there is a clause that you cannot hurry up and get a hundred cows. Within six months of adoption. So because we've published it and you know it's coming, cuz cuz trust me, developers will do this too.
Yeah.
So.
Well, so.
That's the reverse gotcha.
What Kristin is talking about is. Once it's essentially, when, when did this all become public, this process we're in?
April was our first public meeting with it out.
Yeah, so. So developers and others who have land use decisions to make, they're, they're more or less put on notice that, hey, this is coming. And so, uh, once that's, once that, once you know it's coming, um. It's not really allowed to go out and undermine that, knowing it's coming the day before. You, you, you understand what I'm saying, that's.
Buy flood insurance when the hurricane's two hours away.
That's a good way to say it, yeah, yeah.
How was everybody notified that this was gonna happen?
Well, the, I don't, I can't remember now when it was first published or how it was.
So I can check the dates, but it's been published on our website. It's been published on Utah Public Notices, and I don't. I hear you, but I, I can't get to you unless you're on the tax rolls.
The taxes find you?
So if the taxes found you, the postcard should have found you.
But the postcard didn't happen in April.
No, the postcard happened in June. So we worked on it, so. I guess the.
We don't wanna get too hung up on that.
Yeah, the short of it is, if you care and you want to be notified of every meeting we have, you need to sign up for Utah Public Notices. There's only so much I can do to find you. I have posted it at the post offices physically. We printed postcards. It's on our website. It's on Utah Public Notices. And like, I don't have any other avenues to find you. So. I need a little bit of give back, sign up for Utah Public Notices. You'll get every single agenda. So that's your best bet, is Utah Public Notices website.
Also, everyone, everyone has, you, you know, everyone's been notified at this point, and and there will be input. You'll have a chance to make input. And before any decisions are made. So I think. The timing of when, you know, everyone first found out about it's probably in question, but everyone's been notified properly now, I think.
And if you have neighbors that still I didn't hear about it, have them sign up for Utah Public Notices. If they don't have internet, like, I. I don't know. So meet us in the middle with trying to get word out. Um, I have tried to also text or email key people. Steven has been integral in that, to get it on Facebook. I don't have social media, but economic development has put it up. Um, I've contacted people in the community that I know have widespread Facebook accounts. Like, hey, get this on Facebook. Um. So that's kinda all I got.
And I asked you about a postcard. You told me that they were mailed out. I got my taxes and I got a postcard. Well, I never got a postcard.
But you did get your taxes.
My taxes and half for the last twenty-five years.
Okay, so you're gonna have to check with the assessor's office.
When we discussed it, you personally told me, well, check with your post office because they're probably doing something with your mail.
That's not what I.
Oh, yes, ma'am. I have it on page.
Okay.
Okay. Check with yours. The assessor has all the addresses. They're auto-populated from our tax roll records. Cuz at nine thousand postcards, I can't individually.
My three minutes are up.
Assign them.
Any other public comment? Speak now, forever hold your peace.
Anybody online?
Is this panel governed by Robert's rules? Or do you have a bylaw?
We've got Planning Commission bylaws.
Okay, and if it's not covered in your bylaws, then it's covered by Robert's rules, correct?
I would say so.
So what about a motion that's on the floor?
That wasn't a motion by one of us.
Why any motion?
There's no motion.
Public com- public comment can't make a motion, sorry.
Okay, so last comment. Um, this meeting's not a public hearing, and a public hearing is a place where you have more freedom to discuss and back and forth. This is, this meaning, um, you're, you have a public comment. And it's not that the county's trying to limit what you can say or do. It's just that there has to be certain steps in order to the process. Otherwise, every meeting becomes kind of a long public hearing type meeting. So Robert's rules. I- is not, it's not what governs this.
That's why they're asking.
Yeah, so anyway, a, a motion would have to be made by one of the panel here. The motion that you. Well, I guess it depends on how you look at it. Um, you have a chance to make your comments today, hear what's going on, get discussion. Learn more about how you can be informed, and then you have a public hearing coming in probably November fourteen-ish. Yeah, okay, thanks.
Thanks, Jents.
Okay. We'll close the public comment period and move into administrative items. Okay.
So, update from the La Salle Community Workshop. Um, I'm sorry that it looks like we missed just a few of your comments. We did consider all comments. Um, and we're gonna go through them one by one today. So, um, I think we have clarified the home-based business. Yes, we're good. As soon as it becomes public space, you're commercial. Um, also, I'll talk with you individually after about your situation. Um, on loans and mortgages and taxes and stuff. Um. So use table updates. Let's switch what I'm sharing. All right, so we have some changes. Um. Brian Torgerson, thanks for being here tonight. It's gonna be, I thought it was gonna be quick, but here we are. Um, wanted to include grazing and civil culture, which is timber production. I had to look it up, sorry. Um, in multi-use category. Do we have any discussion on that from the Planning Commission?
I'm good with that.
What was the second word you used there? Grazing and?
Civil culture? Clap it out. Sil.
That's a lot of clapping.
Yeah, that's a lot of clapping.
Thank you.
Um, grazing, we already have. No, we don't. Do we, while we add grazing to the list, let's just do, just grazing. Do we want to add grazing to other areas such as ag? Yes. Anywhere else?
Why wouldn't?
No. That's good. Ag and multi- mu- multi-use?
If we're gonna start changing the use table, then we start, we need to look at all the maps for all the cap, all the areas. Cuz how is that gonna impact Bluff, Spanish Valley?
We can, we can revisit that, but let's just think of just the use and where we. Want to combine harmony in uses first, and then we can visit the maps if you'd like.
I think it ought to be conditional in, in community commercial and highway commercial.
Uh. We're not talking about private grazing.
Oh, we're not. We're talking about commercial grazing?
This is commercial grazing, and there's a lease and. So if you have ten cows.
Okay.
That's under re- you know, your residential private use. Okay, we're talking.
Commercial in parentheses.
That goes for all, everything on the list.
So in Spanish Valley, the whole west side of the highway is leased gra- uh, grazing.
So do we wanna allow grazing in highway commercial?
No, that PLM.
Yeah.
Permitted?
I.
I don't wanna make any more hiccups. If we, if we're permitting it elsewhere.
It's PLM and Silla. That owns that inside west side, and I mean, that fence is only, it's. Way closer than the thousand-foot highway commercial, so.
See, I don't know what conditions we would put on it.
Right.
So I say we just permit it.
Well, I think your conditions would be making sure that you have adequate fencing to keep cattle in, right? Or whatever.
Well, that falls under different ordinance of fence in, fence out. So we would be, that's beyond our scope, I think. Okay, so that takes care of grazing, timber production, which I'm like, where?
Does that mean that it's not permitted in commu- community commercial grazing?
Grazing is not permitted in community commercial. Yeah, I'll go back in and dash those out.
Anywhere there's trees.
Yeah, so, uh. Multi-use and ag. Okay, that takes care of our first bullet point there. Uh, inclusion of boat storage and recreational support. And I'm wondering, I do think boat storage should be its own entity and not under like RV storage. Those are different animals.
You must not boat often.
So we want that in, uh, recreational support. And that makes sense cuz all of our rear river corridors and Lake Powell are.
Still should be commercial and.
Yeah, you might wanna.
Community commercial?
I mean, we have boat storage in airport, for sure.
How about highway commercial?
Yeah.
Um, multi-use, let's look at where we have RVs. So RVs, we have storage yards and highway and industrial.
So. I just wanna look at the, like you, that said RV storage facilities, right?
Yeah, so.
Indicating that it's more than one or two RVs.
Correct, so RV storage.
Now, I don't wanna make sure that we can't construe boat, boat storage to be, you know, one individual. You know, one individual boat, we're talking about a large.
This is, everything on the list is commercial, you can park your boat in your driveway. But if you start parking your neighbors and their neighbors and their, and you got twenty boats in your driveway. And I think. Boat storage yard. So he's a non-compliant.
So he can't get a fourth.
I've got another one that was brought to my attention, so. In Old LaSalle, there's quite a few parcels that have been purchased up through there. People buy them for their camps. They want RV connections, they go up there seasonally, use them, and I think that should be a permissible use, most of that, most of those lots that were purchased in Old LaSalle. Were for that intent.
I'm gonna have to get, this is on our radar big time. And I will. At least get that section too, once we get it covered. We don't really know quite how to handle this. If they are an RV park. So let's say it's a family, it's family land, and there's twelve RV hookups. I think how it might go is that they have to come in for a conditional use for an RV park. The, the. You gotta see me from the other side. The other side is we just have a bunch of RVs out there, and so. And unless they get a conditional use or something to put us on their, them on our radar. I can't track who's who and and what's happening. Um, because. I don't like the twenty-eight day limit, that sucks, like, who only uses an RV? If it is a family campsite, and they've got their RV hooked up there all summer. That's more than twenty-eight days, so then, so we're figuring out how to work that legally, but I think it will probably, they'll have to apply for an RV. Park.
Cause I know, I know many, many of them in Old LaSalle that have purchased them for that, and they've put the money in for their infrastructure for them. Their children, grandchildren, there's one right there, the Bollans, right there on the, on forty-six, and it's, I mean. And that's exactly what they use it for, they put in a little pavilion where they can all. Meet together under it.
I know the one. It's conditional and ag and everything up there's ag. So they just come get registered with us, we're good to go.
Uh, Rey Mesa, LaSalle Creek, is that all ag?
It's all ag up there.
Do you think it should be an unlimited number of RVs per parcel?
Private, and you're meeting your health department requirements on your water and your sanitation and, I mean, you have every right to do it.
But see, I can't check up on that unless they apply for a conditional use, then I can go up there and go, okay, yeah, it all looks good.
Well, but, what what you're talking about is like the commercial use.
Yes, exactly.
This is just private, right?
Not necessarily. I think. I think we've limited it to two on. I'd have to look at the section, and the attorneys haven't looked at it yet, but I think right now we have it written as two RVs. Can be on a property. Without being, it's two or less, without being an RV park. This is all draft.
I don't remember what the. Limit was, but. You know, if you have your, if you have a commercial operation, you've got a set of rules. You've got your own personal, you've got a whole different exemption from the normal set, the commercial set. So, but your personal use could be subject to certain health requirements.
Correct.
Which may come into play, I don't remember now, and so, probably largely, what you're saying about, you know. The families getting together and you're all pulling an RV on some. One thing. Having RVs.
Yeah, absolutely.
But like, the assessors, if we conditional use it. And if they ever do wanna turn it into a business, that can be part of their conditions that then transfer ownership. So if they decide, A, I'm leaving the area and I wanna sell off this, and hey, this would be a great opportunity for somebody doing a, a commercial RV park. But it won't be assessed as commercial until they pull a business license. So you're still gonna be raw ag land.
Not the one that's using it for their, for their family.
But we, we have said, we don't define RV park as commercial or private, we just define RV park as. As three or more RVs.
So if I was to build three little two hundred square foot cabins, put them on a trailer home up there, and they're not RVs. But they're gonna be the year, year round, that's why.
There's a lot of other steps in there, and I'll talk to you about. Like, you have a fixture, like, if you don't affix them, then they're taxed as private property, so are you gonna fix them or not? Okay, so then they're just taxed as private property, are you gonna register them with the DMV?
Don't have to, they're on, on a.
If you don't affix them, and they're on wills, you do have to register.
Because you put them on a trailer, they are considered a modular unit. They do not.
You have to have an, a certificate of a fixture. I'll talk to you about it later. Anyways, the RV situation is on our radar, right now we have two. Two is okay on any property. But any more draft form. But any more than that. And you've gotta apply for an RV park. We should definitely limit that.
I have six.
Yeah, if you, if you can't park them in your driveway and you're on the street and snowplow can't get through.
Problem is, Lloyd's all got Fords and they're all broke down.
So we're, we're looking at the RV stuff and how to handle that, because. You, we have to have a way to enforce the flip side of it, the, the ugly side of RVs that don't have proper sanitation. People are living, like, so that's, that, the flip side is more driving that conversation. Than that I have a buddy with a campsite. And I know the campsite, it's very nice. I know several of them, they're all nice. And they're upkept and they look good. But, the flip side is kind of ruining some of that.
Yeah, but all the kids in class should not get. Kept in from recess, cause that one kid was being a jerk.
Okay, so we'll, as soon as I have an answer for it, I'll get it to you.
So besides just this, besides this use table, or where else is it addressed in our proposed ordinances?
It's under our conditional use.
Underneath the conditional use, like.
Section.
Section.
Chapter fifteen. It used to be chapter sixteen. Okay, inclusion of ag type one and type two animal densities for community commercial, and I heard tonight and residential. In general, it seems like community commercial was what people wanted at the workshop. Um, so let's go up to animal densities. Type one and type two, as Naomi pointed out, it is quite low. Um, so just to give you some talking points, like. I personally would feel okay about it being in residential, because those animal densities are very low, however. If we're gonna change the animal densities, we might not want that in residential.
Can we look at that table or where, look at where that's at?
Now you're really, on my other computer, yes. Hmm, where do I wanna go, actually? You're really pushing it here, TC. Wish I don't want everybody to see, stop sharing everything. Yes, that's the one. So we have. So an animal unit. Is one cow, point seven dairy cows, point five horses, ten sheep, five ducks. Whatever, there you go. So the number of standard sized livestock is, that counts as one animal unit, but then there was the other thing from.
Fifty-five turkeys.
Fifty-five turkeys. This is, here, I'll share Utah Public Notices. If anybody's wondering, this is where you can sign up for. Emails, thank you. Sometimes it hurts. It should've just been on the main page. Just look up Utah Public Notices, sign up, alright, you and I can talk after the meeting, I guess, I don't know. Okay, let's see if I have it on here. I don't see it from your side, so sorry if it was difficult. This isn't what I want, though. It won't let me. I'll be back, yes, I have it.
Thank you, sorry for the delay. Okay.
Um, Trent, maybe open up the discussion by adding animal density.
You guys, if you go on San Juan County. Dot org website. You can click over and it'll say agendas. You can go through. Any board for the county. The minutes are there. Um, I, where's the audio?
The audio has to be posted within a. I forget now, it's four U N R, but I think that's on the state public.
Okay.
And I forget the address to it, but all cities, all counties. Uh, some other government agencies, they're all required to follow this, and so. You have your audio from these meetings and they're, they're available really quick. And the reason for that is, if you wanna appeal something, you're prepared for that, you know, you have to have access to it. The minutes are posted only after they're approved, which means. Last time's minutes just got approved in this meeting, so you're always kind of a month back. But if you go to audio, then you've got, you know, everything. That way, so. I forget what that website is with the state, but.
Utah dot gov?
Utah Public Notices.
Yeah, slash PMN.
So say I get Mac. Utah, Utah Public Notices, Google Utah. And it's got all the city, all the. All the meeting you could want.
Right.
Videos on YouTube too, and then. Lloyd's Book of Scenarios is also posted there.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Okay.
You guys had, uh, one and two animal density there.
Yeah.
Right here, do you want me to hand it to you?
No. But let's just go back and talk about that.
Okay, so, I'm not exactly sure what you want.
I don't know. Animal units. The number of standard sized livestock that counts towards one animal unit is as follows. One slaughter slash feeder cow. Point seven dairy cows. Half a horse.
Which half?
The back half, probably. Ten sheep or lambs. Five ducks. Two and a half swine, or over fifty-five pounds, or ten swine, less than fifty-five pounds. One hundred laying hens or broiler, broilers. Thirty laying, or thirty laying, oh, excuse me, hundred laying hens or broilers with continuous overflow watering. Thirty laying hens or broilers without. Fifty-five turkeys.
Should we get mean five?
I mean.
That's a lot of turkeys.
Bro, that's a lot of turkeys and not very many horses. I mean, pretty half-ass ordinance right there. Especially if you're talking about a donkey.
Alright, so, this is what we have written in the draft right now.
So, is this the same information that's in the table that Melissa has pulled up?
So this, so they're two different things, this is your animal units.
Okay.
Chart. So, two horses count as one animal unit. Does that make sense? Ten sheep count as one.
I swear that's not what I just read, though.
Yeah, half a horse counts as one animal.
Right, so you can have two horses. Half plus a half equals one.
On five acres, okay, but four count?
No, 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 no.
Okay, alright, animal.
You can have two, you have a half horse. Oh, I'm backwards, huh? Lloyd, where were you on that one? So a horse counts as two animal units.
One horse counts as two animal units, yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, alright, so, this, I'm looking at this real quick, from Steven. Um, the, this you, animal units is very similar to bluff. So we probably, this is probably Utah State Code, I'll have to fact check things, but. We can probably go to this. Um. Cause it seems pretty standard. This. So they've, they've even simplified it in bluff, not to throw a town of bluff under the bus here, but, um. They've even simplified it just into. Large animals, medium animals, and I think that's all they have. Um, and what counts. So you can see on that chart below, we might want to simplify it, instead of doing the animal units. Just do a large animal is one of these. A medium animal is one of these, that might be easier for folks to understand.
Agreed.
Okay. Okay, so maybe, do we want to? I don't know, head this direction? Should we just, I know bluff is about right here, Tuilla's about right here. Do we want to move away from the complicated animal units chart, cause I messed it up. And I wrote it.
I think so, I mean, I think, I think this.
Yeah, we shouldn't have any half.
No point sevens?
No.
Nothing.
No.
Okay. Cause then, cause then we also get into like, are you rounding up or rounding down that people will take advantage of? Okay, I like this, this is pretty simple and clear.
But wait.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I can't, can you explain how this applies to our residential zone or community commercial zone? Because this, the Tuilla one is specifically for rural residential zone.
Right, so we're going to take off that. And just look at that. You with me? Just the chart. And where do we want the chart to apply to?
Meaning type, ki- and kind? Or the table?
So just the table. That, but that includes a type and the kind. So.
Cause that's one unit equals number listed below for rural residential.
So get rid of the rural residential, cause we don't.
Have a rural residential zone.
Hold on.
Yeah, we're just realizing.
We're taking the table to where we want it. So do we want it in community commercial? Um, hold on, before we jump into the table, I have a caveat. Regardless of what. This board can do for animal density. There are still state building and health codes that we don't have anything to do with. For instance. You cannot have a corral within a hundred feet of your residence. That is a state health code. So.
Or a chicken coop.
Or ch- chicken coop?
That's what's in the ordinance.
Okay. So just know, even if we allow for ant, for higher animal densities. There are other building codes and health codes that we, that are enforced at that point. That this board does not have any control over. Okay, with that caveat. No, you cannot build a cafe next to somebody's chicken coop. So where would we like this table to be applied for animal densities one and two?
Can I just make a comment?
Sure.
I called up Twillo County and, and it's actually more, there's more information in here. About farm animal units per acreage. And it talks about how multiple use and agriculture zones are allowed to self-regulate animal counts. So long as the animals do not cause a nuisance. Um. If, if, um, and it also talks about, so that there's rural residential, there's. Multiple use and ag, so in multiple use and ag, you self-regulate.
Um.
That might solve some problems.
Well, but I think. That also might. Where we have multi-use everywhere, do you want your neighbor to self-regulate a hundred cows?
The zoning.
On half an acre.
The zoning administrator may decide to further restrict if the, if it's a nuisance.
I would be okay with the self-regulate in ag. But where we have multi-use on such small of parcels and big parcels. Um, I think we need to have some discussion over that. So let's take self-regulate out for now. That's, that's step two. Where do we want this table to apply? At a minimum.
It should apply in La Salle.
Yep.
Ag.
But maybe not in Spanish Valley.
Community commercial is what every, we've got a lot of feedback for community commercial. Multi-use. Uh, how about recreational support? You're out there in. The boonies with your boat.
Not with your trail riding business.
But not with your trailer. Okay, there was some discussion for residential. Do we want to allow this table in residential?
Yeah, I mean, there's gotta be some sort of guiding document, right?
Rather than just nothing?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, where would we like to go to the? Self-regulated as long as it's not nuisance? Ag? Okay. Um. I'll just put us.
I mean, you are kinda, you, you are kinda opening up a can of worms there, right?
Yeah, I. I don't. Let's, let's talk about it. Do we want to have a separate animal density chart? For ag instead of just being wide open to anything?
Well, I don't think we wanna limit producers. How they can produce on their land.
Yeah, for sure.
They're gonna choose the right amount of livestock or whatever as to not injure their land, I would think.
How do you regulate the? Like if Lloyd has too many animals and I complain, how do you as the administrator?
So enforcement is very difficult. It's a lot more difficult than people think. I cannot call you out. Your neighbor has to come call you out.
What if he thinks it's fine and I don't?
So you call me and you're like. Hey, planning administrator, Lloyd has. Five hundred cattle on five acres and it smells really bad.
Five acres zoned ag.
Zoned ag. Self-regulated. Then I go out and look at it, document it, take some pictures, take a whiff of that fresh cool breeze. And would send him a letter. Lloyd, you have thirty days to get back to me. Or you're, like, we gotta touch base. Lloyd's like, screw you, I'm not calling you back. So I send another letter in sixty days. Lloyd, you're gonna get fined if you do not contact me.
Send it.
So then he still doesn't call me. So then I send another letter saying, I'm fining you. It to do enforcement after the fact is painful. So.
Yeah, but how do you?
If we can give people guidelines upfront, I would rather do that.
I guess that's what I'm asking.
Most people want to try to follow the rules and if we have it written down, they're like, okay, that's cool.
Yeah, cause if, you know, I'd like to see, the guidelines are what I'm.
Cause to do the self-regulated, then it becomes a nuisance, then I have to. Prove that it's a nuisance and we have to go that route is.
Neighbor that doesn't like another neighbor and complaining and. Yeah, if, if we have the guidance.
But we could. We could up animal densities in ag.
There should be a big difference between your residential.
Yeah.
Like if you're following a guideline like this for your residential, your ag should be substantially bigger than that.
I'll clean this up later. So in agricultural zones. What do we wanna say? Like, are we looking at, like, how many, how many animals? Let's go cows, cause cows is under large animal. How many cows per acre is acceptable? For health and welfare, in ag only.
Ag only.
I think we would have to talk to an ag person.
Okay. Okay, we'll call, I'll call up USU. And actually, they would probably have some great guidelines for animal health and welfare. Okay. Okay, we'll keep working on that and what that looks like.
Oh, what?
No peacock.
No peacocks in residential.
No, leave the peacocks, they're cool. Alright, so I think that takes care of our third bullet. Private Correll, I know we changed it, so I don't know how it didn't get updated, which makes me worried.
Hey, before we move on from that third bullet?
Yes.
I mean, we've, we've just got one table here that we're, that we've talked about adopting, right? And in, I see here on our current issue, we've got three different.
Oh, what's type one, type two? So this is going to be your type one. Um, let me go to. Hopefully I can find it real quick, like. Um. We'll go with that. Alright, this is close enough. Um, that's not quite what I wanted. Whoa.
I thought it was already in the units. Definition of animal one, or.
It is in our. It is in our ordinance, I can, I'll go grab it.
Is that, is that what we're looking for, just the definition of?
I know type three is your, uh, it's what you can do in each one. Type three is your, like, feed lot situation. Can you find it faster than I can?
I'm not finding. I've read it, it's in, what, ag zone, chapter ten? Is it not in there? Or is it in the definitions?
I think it was in ag. Animal density standards, here we go.
Yeah.
Okay. So, animal density type one, so. This. Um. Because we're applying this table to type one and two. This is the density standard, type one is the use, type two is the other use. So we have pasturing. Or we have, uh, grazing and low-density feed. For your type one and two. And both of those follow this.
So we'll propose, we'll follow that, so. The actual language in here, if anything, less than ten animal units. Ten to the universe acres is, will, is proposed to be scratched.
Scratched.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so.
And also, the grazing of animals at a density of less than one animal unit per five acres under type two, also scratched and replaced with.
Yep.
Okay, uh, that. That makes me wonder why we have two types instead of one.
I don't know, type two's that wintering clause. We could just consolidate it.
Next paragraph, okay.
We could consolidate it and simplify it.
And then type three?
Why don't we do, why don't we do that? Why don't we do type two? So we'll have to rewrite that language. Why don't we do type two animal density? For agriculture. Oh, no.
Whoops, it is.
Oh, wait. So type one. Will just be this chart. And it will, will rewrite the language. For grazing, small feed, wintering. Cause yeah, people who have backyard animals, they're not shipping them out for winter, they're, they're year-round, so we'll combine those two.
So how many, what kinda animals can you have on a one acre lot?
Uh, four animal units. Look on this one.
Okay.
This is what we're.
Okay, and then we have type three animal density. Okay. Alright, we like it? Little bit cleaner? I'll work on cleaning it up a little bit more. Alright, so down to.
Thank you for going back to it.
Yep. We're quick around here.
Slow Trent.
Down to private corrals. Let's see. Where is private corrals? We're getting closer.
He was further down. Stables horse barn.
Stables, here we go. So for private, we're just gonna make that permitted, say conditional.
Yep.
There's, oh, multiple use.
Yeah, multiple use.
Alright, we good with the use table?
Wait for me on that one minute, I wanna make sure there's nothing else that we're missing.
I'm still stuck on that RV.
Did you get my notes off my desk? Your notes off my desk?
Uh, the ag business and multi-use, did we cover that?
Stand in my backyard.
Ag business for multi-use, do we wanna make that conditional? Cause ag business is like big.
Well, we have.
It's big ag.
We do have big ag in multiple use currently, or on our proposed map.
So if they wanted to extend it, they could come in for conditional use. Otherwise, it'd be non-conforming.
I, 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 I think I'd like to see that as permitted, just cause throughout the county, not just in La Salle, we do have some of our larger producers that are in multi-use.
Do we wanna? Well, no, are you talking about feed production?
No, no.
What are you talking about?
I'm talking about, uh, let's say, La Salle livestock. It was, uh, let's see, that's what he still calls it, right?
So I think.
I mean, he's all. All, all that, which is.
Yeah.
Pivots, grazing.
Isn't that gonna be under one of these other, though? I see ag industry as like fertilizer production.
Well, what does our definition say it is?
Yeah, good question.
Well, we don't define it.
Well, that's. I mean, that, that's something that.
Well, the, the feed production is, is permitted.
Cause a lot of other things are covered more specifically.
Right, and grazes them.
So packaging, treatment, cells, intensive feeding, storage. Feed yards, fur farms, commercial milk production, food packaging, processing. Plants. I feel like those should be conditional.
So there is a, there is a feed yard there currently, I don't think he uses it as such, but there is, there is something there for feed lot.
I don't know, any other, any other?
I ju- I just think we have enough multi-use to, county and in La Salle in particular, that, that ag business, I mean, that, that fits in there.
I just feel like there's a lot of health concerns. That I'd like to have conditional. Remember, it's permit, it's permitted with safety.
Yeah.
So we can't tell them no, it's just, hey, if you're bringing in a dairy cow production, like, there's some things we'd like you to do. Cause I think the. He's gonna be under type two.
USDA.
It would be, yeah. But like, he's gonna be, let's take the ranch, rancher, for example, that's gonna be a type two animal density. Not, I wouldn't throw that under ag business. Or type, or type three animal density.
I don't know, I just feel like they're so tied together. I, I guess if, if conditional is probably fine. As long as there's an avenue for somebody to have a, have an ag business on multi-use land, I think I'm happy with that.
I mean, this is more. I feel like this is more. Um.
Yeah. I see what you're saying.
Manufacturing of animal byproducts.
Yeah, so conditional is.
And then that still covers the ranch under type three.
Cause I can, I can get back on the RV.
So. No, hold on, I do wanna revisit it, taking this scenario, not your scenario, taking his scenario. Do we want to just permit type three animal densities on ag? Does that, does that make sense?
That's exactly, I mean, that's what it's there for, right? That's the only one on there, so.
Okay. Yeah, this is more, um. Type two for ag only. That's. That's more raising them, calving, type three is. Feed lots, getting ready to slaughter.
What's the acreage for that?
For type two animal densities?
No, for type three. For ag. We were to permit it, what would be the acreage?
So this is also, it'd be as per Utah state code, so we'd have to look that up. So it looks like animal density may not exceed five animal units per acre.
At type three.
Now, there are, I mean, this is where Utah state code trumps us, for instance, type three animal densities must be at least. Twenty six hundreds, twenty six thousands feet away from a residential zone, watershed, water source, aquifer, like. And I would say that there's probably some already out of compliance. Um, and that is, that's not us, that's Utah drinking water.
Non-conforming use.
That's not, non-conforming, that's illegal, currently illegal, still illegal. So yeah, there's these things, even though we're allowing it, there's these other considerations that people gotta do. Okay, use table done, Brian, sorry. You're up. So we have some parcels. We have some parcels that, um. Are already being used in a mining way, and so we need to. Okay, let's. Alright, so, which one, do you wanna talk about first, Lisbon proper mine expansion?
You had it.
I thought I had it.
Yeah, it was further down. There you go, you're getting closer.
Alright, where are we at down here, here's Stein's Road.
Further down and further east. There you go.
So Brian, if you wanna actually come over here and then I'll, I'll just highlight it. So everybody can see it on the screen. Do you wanna point it out over here?
I cannot see it on your map, um. I think it's a little bit further to the southeast. To keep going, I think it's that parcel right there.
This one?
So here it is on this parcel, my map, so here's the mine. And then it's, it's over here, so.
Oh, you're right here, it is not on our map. Okay.
It's probably because we're not taxed and so it's not showing the tax parcel.
That is correct, cause this is off our taxes, okay, so it is.
But yeah, it's right there where your, where, right where your, um, cursor is.
Okay, so it's that next big block? Okay, and then the sand and gravel deposits?
That was, um, existing, uh, Lane Fuller operates that sand and gravel up by LaSalle, and it's been going on forever.
Are you talking about this one?
Yeah.
This guy?
Yep, that one right there, so that is an existing gravel pit, the ones on BLM, the other one's on Silla, um. The one to the west is on Silla. Um, sand and gravel is a very premium commodity in San Juan County, there's not a lot of it, believe it or not, compared to other parts of state, so. It's likely gonna continue to expand, um, because there's just not a lot of resources of, of that out here, so. We would like to see that be industrial as well, just to facilitate that.
Okay, and then the UV mine, is that?
That one's down in Fry Canyon, that's an existing uranium vanadium mine down in Fry Canyon.
The De Naros?
I don't know, but it sounds good.
Except what it's called?
Yeah, the De Naro mine.
Let's see if I can find it on my map here.
Okay, here's Fry Canyon. Is it the one that's up, it's up in the canyon?
Um, it's off the road a little bit, yeah.
I've seen this sign.
So that one's thirty six south, sixteen east.
We do not zone BLM land, correct?
The one to the west.
Right here's the, um. The Fry Canyon, it's a parcel land just off of that, it's the private property around the highway.
Oh, you're on this side. Okay, so there's a private.
So it's just kinda south. Yeah, south west, just about a mile of that.
Radium King.
So it's up in this area.
Is that where it is?
It's off of, I think the gate is right in this road, actually. It's gated right here, I wanna say.
It's an active and permitted mine, um.
Yeah, they're there.
So is it currently zoned?
So we've got it zoned as multi-use, and he's, he's suggesting we, uh. Do a industrial designation?
And why?
It's an existing mine already, it's been mined, it's been actively permitted. Uh, and also, you know, Silla is exempt and so, but it is nice to have those match up if we can.
The use and the zone.
Pardon me?
The use and the zone.
Yeah, if we can.
Okay, and then the Holiday Limestone?
Yeah, that one's, um, down by Comridge. Just outside of Bluff.
Is that one at the junction?
No, it's, so, it's, you see, here's the turn, I think.
There's the junction.
Legal question. We cannot change. That's five hundred bucks, real quick.
No, it's. It's actually down in here on the.
Nothing right now, it stays nothing.
Oh, I know.
Um, it's permitted, I don't know if they do a whole lot of. That's, that's where it's at.
No, we cannot change their zone.
This was pulled off of our tax records, that's probably why you're not shown.
Well, the two gravel pits in, um.
It's just a limestone query, I don't know if they've been much with it.
To in a, a permissible zone for it. Yeah, I would look at that one, cause I, I was under the impression we couldn't change any zoning of any mining of precious minerals and. Even if you're changing it to the better.
It might be zoned as ag, all, all, well. Most gravel pits were currently zoned as ag, so we might have to keep it as ag. But if we, if we can, we'll try to switch them to industrial, cause that makes, it's already happening, so.
Or eminent.
Yeah. Alright, any discussion on those four parcels, hopefully you guys caught that as we're flying around.
We will not disagree with.
Well, the only question I have is, um, where is, is that within Bear's Ears National Monument? Is that, is that one within Bear's Ears?
It is, yes.
Yeah, okay. The last one, or Fry Canyon?
The Holiday Limestone.
Yeah, I'm talking about the Holiday Limestone.
Um, I believe it is, yes, it is in Bear's, but the Bear's Ears for clarification. It does not apply to trust lands, we're in holding, so. But their access may be difficult for them, but that's not something we permit, we don't have anything to do with that, we just give them the lease for the.
Right, yep.
Okay, and then they have to figure it out from there? Anymore?
That was the only one.
Okay. Alright, there was a lot of feedback from Geyser Pass for ag.
The feedback I got was, they did not wanna change from what it was.
Right.
And was it all ag before?
No, it was, it was between, some of it was ag and some of it was multi-use. But we have changed what ag means. So, um. I'm fine to leave it.
When did we change it to multi-use up there?
Since two thousand thirteen, that's the map I have on my wall. Ha, it's about a fifty fifty.
Do you remember this map?
It's about, it's about fifty fifty split of what's ag and what's multi-use. Um, most of the sitla is on the corner side. That was mostly multi-use, most of the private was. Where it says Geyser Creek, a little bit more inland, and that was mostly ag.
So most of all Borough Pass and that through there was ag, and then closer you got to Dark Canyon, we were in the multi-use?
No, opposite.
Or she can.
Maybe I could beat you to it.
Nope, gotcha.
Yeah, but you're not sharing with anybody.
Oh yeah, that's right.
Just to get your bearings, multi-use is green, I don't know who did that, yellow is ag. So you can see. The yellow is ag. The green is multi-use.
And where's sitland?
Sitla is. Somebody needs to mute themselves. So you can see where all the. Won't let me zoom out and show you, here's where all the private is. And basically, the other things you don't see is sitla or national forest. So there's a. Lots of cabins here.
So the private parcels that have cabins on them were ag?
The private parcels. Were mostly ag, uh, well.
Sitla was mostly multi-use.
Sitla is mostly multi-use.
And sitla probably does not have a problem.
What do you, what do you see happening up there, grazing leases? Yeah, I mean, it's so. It's so far away from everything, I don't see a lot of feasibility for other endeavors up there.
I think we keep it all ag and.
That's what they wanted.
That's what they want.
Okay, Geyser Pass changed to ag.
What if they wanna put a couple RVs in?
It's conditional if you have more than two. It doesn't designate if it's commercial or private. Alright, let's dive into LaSalle. So if you look at the, the map, uh, that was included. This was supposed to be a short meeting, y'all.
And it wasn't me this time, it was completely you.
That was the shortest subject, I was told to shut up and move on.
Alright, so going down the list of, uh, comments I had on my radar. So the first one, not necessarily in any sort of order, but just as they were received. West Merkel. Uh, there was quite a response to change this to multi-use, which does not create an island. It actually kinda makes our zoning better, because we don't have this weird residential down the middle there. Um, do we generally, this isn't a voting thing, it's just a generally thing, do we generally like that idea? That's what they wanted.
Now, is this our new solar field?
Uh, it, I, those parcels are too small for anything.
Cause of those few, or those residential.
That's not, what you're, what you're seeing is a block, sorry. What you're seeing is a block overlay from paint shop, because I just barely got the program I needed. Um, so you're not seeing the parcels there. It's a bunch of very, quite small parcels. Okay, so we're good with that guy? Alright. Parcel, this big chunk over here, it was ag, wants to be multi-use, as per landowner. It does not create an island.
But it's what they wanna use it for, is it going to be a problem with residential next to them?
I mean, they'll have to uphold, like, if they were to put animals on there, they have to uphold those. Codes.
Is that Charles Red property?
Correct.
Okay.
It's six hundred and thirty acres.
In multi-use, it was supposed to be kind of our buffer with residential and other areas.
Generally okay by that? Okay, the next one. Is this ag designation down here? Um, and while we discuss that. There's mixed fillings over here for ag and residential, so this. So, but, um. She left already, this one wants to stay residential. So this wants to be ag, and this wants to be ag. This one? This whole block?
Lane, lane comes all the way out here to Bobby Lane. This, this line straight across, and then it comes straight down.
Correct.
This one?
Yes.
And what's his name?
Fuller Construction.
Okay.
And he won dag?
I will contact him directly. I think, um. We, we wanna be careful to not make islands, right, cause the problem. The problem of usability is when you have all these buffer zones in between. Okay, I have this big ag, but I can't put any cows on there, because I have to have twenty six thousand feet from anything residential. Thus making that whole ag piece in the middle unusable. So that's where we have to, we don't wanna make islands, because then we just defeated the whole purpose of turning it into ag.
But the logic on that is already existing loops, right, so, um, I think the logic is backwards, so.
Okay, I'm gonna, I don't have a straight answer for you now. Because that, that distance code is from Utah Health. So I'll look into it.
I mean, we can zone it ag, absolutely, right?
Right.
And then it's on whoever.
And then it's on.
Yeah, I, I think the, the bigger issue in my mind. Yeah, I, I think the, the bigger issue in my mind here is, yeah, Fuller, Fuller Construction and his big plot there. Um, I, I see no problem with it being Ag, but working our way north. We've got another, uh, parcel right there that I'm sure would. Currently has a corral in front of it, keeps horses and and would probably like to have it Ag as well. But we just turned tonight, the next parcel north from that.
Who?
And then, and then just.
Who owns, actually I can find these people. Okay, and then this one's yours, right? So the next two? And you wanna be Ag or multi-use? Well, the other. It makes sense, like for your big lot, Ag makes sense, but for your little lot, how, how big is this little lot in acres? Um, I'm just, did you do Greenbelt?
One. Seven point six one acres.
I'm like, I wonder if that's why they, I don't know why they switched it, that's, that's the assessor, I don't know.
Guess at one point in time, they said. Copper Mill Road did not run down the section line. So the original survey. Each place was caddywampus. And so, my first place I owned to the ditch in the road, the second place I owned to the middle of the road. County road, the third place I owned to rent this fence on the other side of the road.
So does the road come right through here? This one? But why would they split your parcel and have this way? Okay, okay, alright, we'll figure it out later.
And, and Curtis Wilcox always rode anyway. Absolutely does and then.
Okay, well. I'm cautious with Ag on small parcels. And the reason why is if we zone them as Ag, because we have the five acre minimum. It's like, you're locked in. And so, I wanna keep Ag at a smaller parcel so that if somebody has four acres. They can divide it between four ways between their kids. But if we make that four acre parcel Ag, they can't, that's done deal. That has to maintain a hole. Let's look at the parcel fabric. Sorry, yes, point? Hold on, let me find it, there we go.
While, while you guys are looking at, can I just ask one quick question? Um, if their county currently has multi-use. Are those use tables and definitions much different than the proposed multi-use and maybe that's some of the confusion with people wanting multi-use?
So let me sh- let me show you our use table now real quick. Because it's scary. Okay, so we're operating off of two thousand eleven. So, our use table now. Almost got it memorized because it doesn't have a lot on it. So this is our use table right now. For multi-use, Ag and rural residential, there's no residential, there's just rural residential. But this table. Is not. That good. I mean, we have twenty-three items.
And, and the reason I'm asking this is, is let's say in the ch- in case of Red Agora, if he's looking at. Current use table and thinking that's what applies to the future multi-use. That, then that's what I mean.
So the new, the new ordinance dissolves everything previously. Um, yeah, this use table where we only have twenty-three items. Has gotten us in a lot of trouble with, if it's not on this list, it's not permitted. At all, can't do it, and so it's like, well, what if I wanna do? Anything that's not on this table, can't do it.
So just to be clear, that's one of the drivers to update.
I mean, if you look at this use table, we have. Hundred and twenty uses that we've defined.
I think, I think that was asked quite, quite a bit in La Salle, a couple of weeks ago was like the why, why are we doing it? And I'm not sure we ever got a real clear answer or didn't give the public a real clear answer to that while we were, while we were working through it, so. I'm glad you covered that and, and.
It's just terribly outdated, and even with those hundred and twenty uses, if there's something that's. Somebody wants to try, that's not on our use table, it's not permitted. That is why we allowed for, bring it to planning commission. And we'll update the table with, with your idea. Um, you know, this, this old one, short-term rentals weren't a thing in two thousand eleven at all. We don't address it anywhere. And so, um, there's a, there's just a lot that needs to get with the times.
That was back before all the complaining started.
Um, okay, so. Sorry, I'm trying to shifty all the screens. Okay, so if we jump back into the parcel fabric here. Um, we're looking at, at this area. So Lane Fuller. So we're looking at this. Um. Except for she wants to stay, she wants to stay residential. Um, so, our choices are either, it seems, Ag or multi-use. Multi-use does not have the higher density standards, like Ag has a five acre minimum. Um, also if we go multi-use, it, we don't create an island. Um. Do you have? Well, we're just looking in general at this area. So. So we're looking at yours here. And here. Um, maybe you could explain a little bit more pros and cons of why you would want multi-use or why you would want Ag? And are you mostly doing animals?
Animal thing where. You gotta have animals now or you can never have them later, right now I don't have any, but they come and go. All winter stuff, all feast stuff out to slaughter, whatever, there's nothing there at this second.
That still counts, that counts, just because you don't have it today, if you can show receipts of leasing or like whatever.
And there's still, there's still animal units that are permitted in residential, right? So, it doesn't matter if you have one now or and you wanna go get one after this adoption, you can still have. If this is approved, your four animal units on that land.
Per acre.
Four animal units under residential?
Per acre.
So you got seven acres, yeah?
Nope, it's just, it's allowed, so you don't have to come see us. It's just allowed. I think that's okay.
It's your lawn.
I mean, it, I mean, that's it, that's the thing is. Let me look at. So you've got seven acres and once, you got eight acres. And then is this yours down here?
No, that's.
No, okay. So yeah, at eight acres, we wouldn't put you in, you, you wouldn't be considered. Six hundred and thirty acres commercial hay production.
Yeah, so he wants to plan to, you know, take out his house and plant a seven acre, uh, alfalfa field, if you can get enough water to pull it off.
You're good.
Welcome to it, right?
So even under residential, you'd be. Good to go. Now, I think, and maybe we need to contact Lane, Lane Fuller down here, cause that one's thirty-three acres.
Yeah.
Now we're starting to get on the cusp of, is he doing it commercially and selling it, or is he? Doing his own for his own horses, that changes things.
Doesn't do much, I think he does it primarily, um, for personal use, but. The bigger issue is his, I mean, his yard right there, that is, that's a construction yard, right, so that. Definitely doesn't fall within, uh, residential now, commercial or, or, or excuse me. I think construction yards are permitted.
I think they're permitted in both. We got so much for sharing here. Construction yards right here. So yeah, it's, it's permitted in. But not residential.
So, so I guess. Multi-use or? Yeah, so with multi-use, I mean, I don't, with agriculture, we have a five acre minimum, right? So, if, if Bill, you know, gets old, decides to sell his land, you can sell off one five acre plot, right?
You have to have five and five though.
So you couldn't subdivide.
So he could not, you'd have to have at least ten, so that's the, that's the downside of Ag.
Yeah, and I want you to understand that.
If we go Ag, if you ever wanted to split your lot like between your kids, you couldn't. Because you have to have five acre minimums, and where you have eight acres, we can't make five and five. But in multi-use, in multi-use, you can go down to one acre, here, where everybody's on septic and wells. Well.
Say that again, explain that?
We can't make a lot that can't have a, a, anything on it. So you can't make a.
Undersized lot.
An undersized lot that you go, well, it's never gonna be developed.
Right. Even if it is just a lawn.
And we do have one of those, in fact Trent has one in between his shop and his house or something. Yeah, there's like this weird, you know, point two acres that you can't do anything with or point one acre. And it's like, well, you can't sell it, you can't build on it, it's just.
You see that, do you see? That little spot right there? Yeah, I seen that. It's all for. I never knew that, that ma- makes sense though.
Um, so what are we leaning towards, multi-use?
Well, I have a, an issue with one lot staying residential.
Yeah, I think this is a, this is an all or nothing. No, 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 we're gonna talk about that one too because they, they actually said if we can get animal, we'll talk about it. They're, they're thinking about staying community commercial if they can get animal rights. So yeah, we do not, whatever we do, we'll do it to the whole chunk, so consider that.
You're separating that one little lot and it all belongs to the same person.
But see, we don't wanna. We don't wanna separate out this residential. It doesn't, I mean technically, it doesn't make an island.
Yeah, cause I mean, you've got your MU to that side and their residential that side.
You just have these weird little. Holes in it.
Yeah.
I mean.
I don't see a problem with that myself.
It does, well, the problem is protecting that one lot owner as her residential lot. If we block out multi-use all around her. And.
What?
Res- all of it was res- rural residential.
Well, what's the future outlook for that particular area?
Depends on their water studies.
That, that, you know, street, that corner.
I think that corner, there's a, there's a RV park here, there's the construction yard here. Um, right now, this is just a big huge field, but I would say that this is a main access corridor down into the lower community. Especially where we have, we have a big subdivision coming in here. Um, where's the rest of Legacy Fields, I think it's.
That's all, that's all of it, yeah.
So this, this is a huge subdivision coming in, residential subdivision. And so you're gonna be having quite a few people accessing that subdivision down this road. This way?
Bobby Lane.
Well, yeah, but how do they get to Bobby Lane?
Yep, either right there where your cursor's at. Over to the right, Copper Mill down, there you go.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
All the way down.
They're not gonna be here.
No, they turn on Markle to Bobby, there you go.
I mean.
Well.
I can see s- maybe some supporting businesses.
One thing we haven't talked about is what is, what is a process, proposed process look like for changing zoning?
Um, first of all, we do not want to spot zone. So if this neighbor in the middle goes, I wanna change my zoning. We're not entertaining that.
Yeah, but there's some process to change zones, or there will be.
But that doesn't mean that we have to grant it.
Agreed, but what does the process look like?
So they would apply, they would apply through my office for a zone change. Um, I don't know if legally we can give this a year. Right now in our, it's written really weird in our ordinance right now where we only accept zone changes in this little window of time. And the, I think the reason why they did that is so that we can get all the zoning requests at once. And see if there's splotches that need to be changed versus getting applications continuously. Where they're all spot zoning. So, um, I don't. We have a window of time that zone changes will be entertained. And I think we want to gather up any zone change requests and look at the picture, the bigger picture with those requests. Versus having one zone change come in.
You're talking.
At one meeting.
Uh, makes sense.
And that, and it does make sense so we can see what's happening in the big picture. And so we'll probably do something of the sort moving forward.
So I guess my point being is if, I mean, we've got an interface here between residential and MU, right?
Right.
So if we have one residential plot on a strip of MU over here. Say Mr. Wharton here has had enough of the cold weather, when he's old and decides to sell out, he sells it to somebody. Who is gonna inherit or get a piece of property that's MU, right, but he doesn't want that, or let's say Ag. He doesn't want that, he wants to go ahead and, and, uh, sub that out to, you know, eight parcels or whatever it is, eight acre parcels, right? But he's not gonna be able to do that if it's Ag, so he has to come to this board and say, hey, I want this now to be rezoned residential, right? He can do that, he can do that, and we can look at it and either approve or, or deny it, right? So in this case, I mean, he is butting up against residential as it is. In that hypothetical, I would say, yeah, sure, rezonate to, rezonate to residential. So, with that being the case, I, I don't see any problem with having Ag or MU. Residential and then Ag or MU.
I mean, if anything, it. It's, it prohibits that one residential, I'm trying to think of property rights here and the balance between, right? By not turning that one MU and if she wants to stay residential, that's fine, but it almost is a ding to her. If everything around her is MU, and you can do all these other things, but you've limited yourself as this one.
Yeah.
Parcel.
I mean, she's, she's got four acres there, right, or whatever it is, I think it's, it's less than five.
Okay, I'll call and talk to her. Okay, I'll call and talk to her too, um, but I'm thinking this chunk should go to. But Legacy Fields is La- Legacy Fields is right here. Right here.
But it's on the, yeah, on the west side, the east side of that road, east side of Bobby Lane is not Legacy Fields.
If we did this multi-use. And just butt it up against that multi-use, that would be okay?
With the one residential block in the middle?
I don't wanna, I'll call and talk to her, and if she's super wants to go that way, but I don't see a reason for her to limit herself. Okay, you do?
Residential, yeah.
I'll talk, I'll talk to her.
Multiple use on either side.
I wouldn't support that.
I'll get it firsthand instead of. We've got this big, alright, that takes care of. No, it doesn't, that takes care of a new one, alright, we're on our last bullet point there, bullet point four, well, it's not our last, but it's. The last one on the page, five. So, this ag chunk down in that residential. Is this one.
But we missed that long one in the.
And and this one? You know, I think I calculated them, but I didn't. Well, altogether, it's a hundred and thirty-three acres.
Just and to the west of there, so including Swafford. To the west, other west.
This one.
Yep, that one and the one north of it.
And this one.
Yep, that.
Hey, what about these guys? They want, they all wanna be ag? So these are already what would call an. Yeah, that's already a non-conforming lot if we change it to ag.
Well, but it's owned by the same folks that have the bigger lot there, there you go, there's five.
That one doesn't make it.
That one doesn't make it, yeah, barely. But that's the same folks own those two lots as well, though, yeah? Yeah, you guys have two, but south of you also.
I hear him just thinking down the road prompts that I've already seen in my ten months of being here.
Which is what?
Just if. Let's take this one, for instance, two point four acres. If we zone it ag, let's say LaSalle gets a water supply. So now they can have smaller lot sizes. If we zone this as ag, they're stuck.
Unless they come in and ask for a rezone.
I would like, if we are going to change this to ag, I would like to change this whole chunk. That one's five, that one's five, and that one's five.
I'd be good with that. Did you guys wanna go to ag?
The main reason for that again is I'm trying to minimize the buffer zones, cause buffer zones. They're just hard to work with.
I under- I understand that, but I mean, we, you and I will probably not be working with it. Our children will probably be working with it in LaSalle, you know, thirty years down the road. You know, so d- doing what's right for now is also important as well as planning for the future.
Are we good with that whole chunk being ag? I know, I was like TC, hold on, oh, I did record it, perfect.
Yeah, to these others, I sort of hate to.
I didn't get any notes. Individually or comments individually from them, they might have been there, I don't know.
Yeah, I sort of hate to change it to ag after we've had it. As residential and because they might just assume.
I can call, I mean, where we're dealing with three, I can call them.
Conversations around that and just knowing those three, or at least two out of the three. I think will be very good.
You're not gonna get a hold of Kurt, he's in the pit.
Hey, I make phone calls late.
So, are we having a parcel that's two point four four acres become ag? Even though the standard is five?
So that's in what we call a non-conforming parcel.
Okay, so we're setting a precedent, other folks could request. To change their under five acre parcels to ag, right?
I mean, this is two.
You gotta keep in mind the bigger picture of Washington doing this as well, creating.
A chunk. Cause if we leave this residential, this field has to keep twenty-six linear, twenty-six thousand linear feet from that.
I mean, and and that's okay, I mean, I'm not opposed to it, I'm just saying, we're opening up the doors to. More conversations around what size parcels.
But I think this one's arguable with.
Roll over ranch expansion solves this problem.
Well, you got red, red ag right behind you.
Okay, we're good with ag? Moving on, alright, so this one. Steven Schultz, this is forty acres, and he would like to be multi-use. To be included in the other large chunks behind him, which makes sense. Any discussion on that?
I'm good with that.
Okay, speaking of large chunks. This large chunk up here would like to be changed, we had them split between community commercial. And. No, highway commercial, we had them split between community commercial and highway commercial, and they would like to be multi-use.
Makes sense.
Um, the only thing I don't love about that is it does break our hopeful main street. But it's kind of patchwork together at this point anyways, so.
So why are you drawing, cause isn't this one accurate on the map right now as it is?
Oh, and that's all gonna be MU, okay. These have not been live updated, this is a separate file until I get your good graces. Okay, the one I don't like, sorry, is this MU stub here.
Oh, yeah.
It's. It's two acres. I, so these guys actually wrote me a note and said that they are fine with community commercial if we can get the animal densities. So I feel like that's resolved as community commercial, as long as we include that in the use table. And that's it? Hold on, you're not on my map.
You're behind the county shed, yeah? Would, so as we transition into that, I did, I did wanna have a conversation about that. So we've got community commercial extending, what, three streets or two streets south of Markle? Is there any reason that we should have it that deep?
Oh, sorry, my last one, Fox Lane, Foxy Lane wants to be. Multi-use or community commercial with animal rights. No, I'm trying to think of some similar.
Can you strike what I just said?
No, 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 I, I, I'm following up with you, I'm trying to think of some similar. Areas, what is that one town up in Wyoming?
Kimmer.
No, that's a terrible town. You know, a lot of the off the beaten path towns have more of a. Instead of having a main street, they have more of a main area. And where, Town Square, where I don't think. There's going to be a ton of growth in LaSalle soon. Um, we're, I think the reason to bring it back a few. Streets is to try to just promote economic opportunity. For people who their kids wanna start a business, and so we've created kind of a. Able to do that area, live-work unit.
Yeah, I'm on board with that.
And I think there is, that we are seeing, we are seeing a lot of home-based business. That, okay, now I do want to open up my my horses to trail rides, well, well. Can't do that in rural residential, because now all of a sudden you're having transactions on your property. By making it community commercial, you can have people come in, park on your lot. Saddle up and go for a trail ride, and they pay you on your property. Um, so that's, I foresee a lot of LaSalle's economic growth as that one off. Small town business.
I agree. Um, it it's my, the reason for my question is because on east, you know, towards the east side of Markle, we've got. You know, one lot working our way south in uh community commercial, and then all of a sudden we get to. Beeman and we've extended it to three lots south, right, and then that kind of stays at that level all the way to LaSalle Road. I just didn't know if there's rationale between the two lots south and three lots south, what that looks like.
I mean, we tried to match it up with current, like, home-based businesses even, if they ever want to expand. Oh, I've been there.
Runs right by the county shed to the east. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I had to do the.
So the, the whole um upper end of Legacy Fields, it's all residential in there. Are we still gonna make? All that community commercial?
I think if somebody, I mean, if somebody buys one of those lots. And decides to do.
Yeah, the, all of them are bought by people that.
So if they want to do a mechanic shop out, street front. That might be a consideration in why they bought that, you know, that lot along Markle. It's a little bit busier of a road versus buying one more down on Bobby Lane.
I don't think they have any idea where that would be the case.
No, absolutely not, because that was phase one of Legacy Fields as it went down through there. And so that, all the first lots were bought up, and then phase two went in and. Whatever, so, yeah. So that, you've got all these lots that are chases to Markle on Bobby Lane that are all residential.
So you're saying, take, take, let's go back to it.
Cause you, you have the one trailer park that's been illegal forever since it opened.
But we're making it more legal. So you're saying, take this whole chunk and make it residential? Other than what we just did for MU.
So if you go back up, right, go to your left, Lou. Go to your right, to the right of Bobby Lane, keep going, just going, right there, that's a trailer park. And that's the only thing in there that's a kind of a commercial use, but it still, does it fall within some housing? I mean, would that be? Would it be better to make this kind of a multi-use to where you're creating housing? Because it, that's, that's their commercial operation, is it, is a trailer park.
What if we take?
Cause then you can still have your residential.
What if we take the multi-use, cause we're bringing it up, what if we take it over? To there, and then residential here, and then Main Street starts here. Sorry, by Main Street, I mean, community commercial.
All the.
Oh, Dita, yeah.
Yeah, Dita, yeah.
That's what we're trying to fix.
But, but this one's Kelly Green. Is this, is the, and then his son's right below him, right, that the two perfect rectangles?
And there's somebody new in the middle.
I don't, I don't see the harm in keeping them community commercial. That opens it up more than.
So, and and the reason I say that, can we build a house in community commercial?
Uh, yeah, I think you can.
Are you asking that because you already know the answer to it?
No, I mean, it was easier back when we only had twenty-one of these.
What, what does he want, though? Who's that?
Gaddy Desmond, he's next to the Greens to the.
Yeah, he's got the little shed right against Kelly's place.
The thing is, is if we, we could change it to residential, but then it really limits what people can do on it. Versus if we change it to either multi-use or keep it community commercial. Like, like I said, a lot is not happening, so would like to allow it to happen if people want.
As long as it allows um them to use it as a residential. And, and I have to disagree with you on one thing, they cannot tax you. On your property by what is zoned, it has to be taxed by use. Taxed by use, so I don't care what your zone is, the assessor can only tax you by use. By use, if you're using it as a commercial, as a commercial property, yes, the tax rate does go up, but if you are. If you are put in a, like this, you get switched into a commercial. Your use of that property is residential, they have to tax you as a residential use. They're full of it too, because it's.
Yeah, it does not change your mortgage, and we can talk later, I think would be best.
And I can tell you, I've done it, I've done it fifty times, I've, I have commercial property, I've got residential loans on, and.
Well, and I would be interested in calling your loan company myself.
Let's, let's come back up and address his.
Just above the other way.
The other way.
But, and and the only way your mortgage company is gonna see anything is when, when. No, no, because.
It's still residential, it, it. Unless you're putting in a commercial building, you, you're, they don't give a mortgage on a commercial building. They give a mortgage on a residence, they might give a construction loan on a commercial building.
So this seems to cause.
Cause even like on your taxes, it's gonna say single-family residence, vacant land, you know. It's not gonna say.
It does not matter, it doesn't matter the zone on any of this. It matters what is actually happening. An insurance company is not going to insure your home as a commercial space, if you are living in it as a residence. It is residential, they're insuring a home. Your mortgage com- I. The mortgage company can't. Say that your house is worth this over here, if. Say that your house is worth this over here if they're holding the loan for a residential home. They can only value it at a residential home. So we can talk, let's talk after about your particular situation, but I I'm. Positive because I have affirmed with our assessor's office, taxes is based on use. Um, I have affirmed with several mortgage companies. That zoning does not affect your mortgage, it's it's based on what you're taking the loan out for. Insurance company, they wouldn't insure something that's not there, they're ensuring what is actually physically there and built.
I got the same information out of my insurance and mortgage company, cause I am also on Markle. And I'm gonna be moving to community cur- community commercial, I have the same questions, called him up. I basically got that, that response.
Yeah.
Her response or yours?
Hers. Yeah.
I called Brittany at the state bond today.
Yep.
I called my mortgage company and they said the same thing. That because, it becomes different zoning, I bought my home under a residential. If it changes, then it will then change to that, now we have to re.
So no, 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 no.
Use changes.
It does not, zoning does not affect what you're taking a loan out for. But listen for some clarifications real quick. It does not matter if you are an ag, industrial, residential, it does not matter. If you're taking out a mortgage to buy a residential home. You're getting taxed as residential, your use is residential, if that zone changes, it does not matter. Because you have a loan out on your house that you are living in. So even as things change over time, our zoning does not affect your homeowner's insurance, your mortgage. Your taxes, what will change that is if you change the use. I tear the house down and I put in an office building. I have changed the use, I'm now commercial, that office building might be an ag. Or industrial or multi-use, it doesn't matter where the office building is, I have built an office building. I have a loan out for an office building and I'm insured for an office building. So zoning does not affect your mortgage, your insurance, your taxes.
You're right, the, when, when you do these things, you get. E- every parcel of land is um. It tells when it's approved for its use, and so if you go in for your mortgage and your use is residential. You know, your commercial zone, your loan has to be residential, if that's your use. I. Well, I'm just saying that. That's correct, what you two have figured out, I don't know.
So if somebody is telling you differently. Let's call them together. Because it shouldn't be so, okay, where is your, uh, we're, we're on it.
Yeah, right in the middle.
Okay, so you are, I don't. Thomas, help me get situated here, is it off of this?
Right.
Alright. So. You're right in the middle of community commercial.
Which, which subdivision is?
So it's this, it's this chunk right here, so this chunk here. Down to take the other way and over. I know, but our zoning's there, so.
It's up, go up.
Yeah, yeah, I see you, okay, so he's here. So he is here. You are here. Okay, so our community commercial right now comes down Fox Lane. And down the other way and across. I know. No, I'm talking about just this section, okay, so right now, all of this, north of Fox Lane. Is community commercial, north of the other way and over is all community commercial. So.
I, I think so, cause the other way is depicted in this map with a black line.
Correct.
About that?
Yes.
Working our way south from the corner, we've got Hennifer or Hefner. And then we've got the county. And then we've got Burkhardt.
So.
Then we've got Garcia, so yeah, I think it is from the other way north is proposed.
So what zone are you wanting to be?
Well, I just wanted to clarify what, you know, where it actually was. If they're not gonna raise the taxes and raise, you know, all that stuff, it probably didn't matter.
So. So you are, it's gonna be hard to get you to multi-use, cause you're right in the middle of. Community commercial, um. But residential's allowed and actually we open up some things if you wanna. Try something business-wise that you're good to go for that.
Well, that's, yeah, that's another. Clip note to that, I mean, if residential is uh, permissible in, in uh, community commercial. Given it, there is a permissible use within that zone, they could never come back on you for um. Insurance or mortgage or.
See, and that's, that's the point I was gonna make just a minute ago, is I think there's a lot of confusion both with. The, the folks that our residents have called at the mortgage companies and insurance. And between us, the, the term community commercial, if you put the emphasis on the commercial.
Right.
Right, and the insurance lady hears, oh, you're gonna start doing some commercial business out of your house, then yeah. Obviously, that's gonna, and I think we've had that miscommunication quite a bit, so. The name, the name community commercial itself, I think is causing us a little bit of heartache.
Low and slow, man.
Yeah, I think so.
Well, and I can see like, I, I reference Mankas a lot, downtown Mankas has. Residential homes, then you might have, not saying LaSalle needs a yoga studio, but you got the yoga studio. Then you got the guy doing metal work and then you have, are illegal. We're trying to clean that up too.
That was illegal use that you discussed earlier. It might be the highest revenue business in town, but.
And that's part of our, if we could figure out how to tax it, that's.
Okay. Any other heartaches on the map?
At least I got hookups.
I think we, um, just general comments there, leather work is conditional. Um, and I, I think. Right now, we have it more or less just under. I don't think we actually said leather work.
I think you did, it was pretty specific.
Leather work products.
Yeah.
Um.
Hey, that works for Steve. Permit it.
Do we wanna make it permitted?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do we wanna put it in multi-use?
Yes.
Do we wanna put it in ag?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's where you can.
Dude can make his own stirrups.
Okay.
And I would even, well, what do you think of industrial?
Uh, I mean.
Conditional, conditional, I think is.
Yeah, I mean, that's where you get into the bootmaker, that's popping them out.
Ariat wants to move to LaSalle.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, saw that.
Okay, so big. I just wanna make sure we addressed the growing hay and grain, which is addressed. Where was it, here, agriculture. Hay grain feed production cells, including bulk fertilizers is permitted. So I think that one is not, oh, not in multi-use.
Right.
Uh, hmm, we have both sides of the coin on this one because. We have huge multi-use parcels and we have tiny multi-use parcels.
Yeah.
Um.
Conditional?
I would say conditional, just because of the including bulk fertilizers.
Yeah, agreed.
Or do we wanna put fertilizers on a separate section and make it permitted?
No, conditional.
Okay.
Mister Schultz wants to make a fertilizer factory on his forty acres. And put some conditions on it, right?
Okay, and we addressed the animal densities and we got that one.
Well, do they use that bulk fertilizer for the left? Get it back to residential.
Any other heartburn on LaSalle down briefing?
What? We weren't paying attention, sorry. You're good, he's good.
Listen, this here cannot hear again.
It's weird. Okay, October building prevents.
Are we not gonna go back to the RV?
Not right now, we're not. I'll talk to you after if you would like.
Is, is Thai building? Just.
Thai bought apartments. Thai bought El Rancho and is putting in duplexes.
Where's that exactly?
That's Sheik's subdivision.
Oh, okay, so she, Thai.
Yeah, they ended up buying all those lots out of there.
And there's two four zero nine nine, is that uh, Elk Meadows?
Right here?
Yeah.
I, I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
How about this Steve Schultz, how did he get a permit?
It's just a solar permit. Yeah, we got a lot of solar going in lately, that's.
Where's, where's Cody when we need him, we can show him the whole, uh, what do you call it, the OSP test and what he's gonna change? At least two family homes going in there. Somebody called it last time.
Yeah.
He does the OSP test.
Okay, questions, comments, concerns?
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Motion is second to adjourn. Thank you guys for sticking around.
Nobody yelled, it was fun.
I'm about ready to float away.
Me, me too.
I'm getting ready to go do some illegal camp spots.